Good evening. Being that it's six o'clock, I will call the, to order the June tenth meeting of the Free Town Board of Selectmen. Is there anyone recording the meeting?
I am.
Okay. All right. Tonight's a little bit of a special night because annually, there is a unit in the third grade curriculum about the town of Free Town and to teach the children a little bit about the town of Free Town. And as part of that is a essay contest. And we have four winners tonight. They will read their essays and they will then partake in a part of the meeting to learn a little bit about what the Board of Selectmen does. So, to begin with, we'll have the first essayist, Seamus. Where are you? All right, Seamus, come on up, stand, look at the audience, and please read your essay.
The title of it is "Why I'm Part of My Community: Free Town the Great." Have you ever wanted to know some of the greatest things about Free Town? These are some things I love about East Free Town, Arizona. I'm proud of the festivals we have, which are the Fourth of July Parade and Fireworks, the Strawberry Festival, and the Winter Tree Lighting. They're very, they are fun, they're very fun in different ways. You get hot cocoa in, in the winter when the town tree is lighted. You get a big size strawberry shortcake and hot dogs on Father's Day. And in, in July, you get to hear and see loud, huge spectacular fireworks and a patriotic parade the next day. I'm also proud of our state forests because the Free Town animals live there, are, and are healthy. Because they have a big safe place in one of the largest forests in Massachusetts. I like to hike with my father and brother because we like to go on the trails. I really enjoy the swimming area because I like to stay cool on a hot day. And the final thing I'm proud of Free Town is the historical society because you get to, because you can step into history. I really like the old cars, cameras, maps, and photos because you get to know things looked like back then. I found a picture of my house in the old photos. My house was built in eighteen sixteen, right along the banks of the Assommet River. I hope you really enjoyed my essay and there, and there are many old things left in Assommet and Free, East Free Town.
Okay. Seamus, line up over here because you're gonna help us in a minute, okay? We just need you to stand over here for one minute. All right, the next one is Emma.
Why I'm Proud of My Community. I'm proud of my community for many reasons. I'm proud of my school, our police station, Profile Rock, and the Free Town State Forest and Long Pond. First, I'm proud of my school because my teachers taught me to learn easily. Second, I'm proud of our police station because they help us make sure we are safe. They also give out positive citations for their behavior. One summer, my friend and I earned one, and we got free ice cream at Amy's. Third, I'm proud of Profile Rock because it shows the face of an important native American Massasoit. Fourth, I'm proud of this Free Town State Forest because a bunch of people go there and do fun activities. For example, there's a splash pad that you can play in during the summer. Finally, I'm proud of Long Pond because I live on it and I love to go swimming, boating, kayaking, and tubing on it. A long time ago, it was called the Pond Court Lake. It has three islands, Go Island, known as First Island, Lewis Island, known as Second Island, and Nelson Island, known as Third Island. Third Island has a sandbar that I love to swim out. It is also called, it is, it also has a canal. This shows why I'm proud of my community.
Thank you. Okay, the next one, Ben.
Why I Love My Community. My name is Ben Gower. I am a third grader in Free Town Elementary School. I am proud of my community because I, it represents freedom. From Profile Rock, we can go climb it and eat food. It's a forest where you can read quietly and listen to animals. My town makes them let me feel calm and happy. The A H one attack helicopter is a memorial, memorial, is in Memorial Park, reminds me of people who fought for our freedom. I'm thankful for them fighting to protect us. Every Fourth of July, our town celebrates freedom with a parade and fireworks. My school has a competition to raise money, to help pay for fireworks, and I like to reserve them with my family. I'm proud to live in Free Town, and that's why I love my community.
The last but not least, Max.
Why I, why I'm Proud of My Community. I'm proud of my community for many different reasons. First off, because it's safer and quieter than the city. I am able to play outside and not have to worry. There are many forests to explore, paths to hike, and rocks you can climb. At the Free Town State Forest and Profile Rock, there's also many interesting landmarks. The helicopter at Memorial Park and King's Mountain Cave are two of my favorites. Free Town has, has a very nice school named Free Town Elementary School, which I've gone, which I've gone to since. Free Town is one of the oldest communities in the United States, founded by the pilgrims and their descendants, all the way back in sixteen eighty-three. During the summer, I like to swim at the beach, which is connected to Long Pond. I also love going to Lakeside Festival every year on Memorial Day weekend. During the fall, I love seeing all the color, the colors of the leaves on the, all the trees. We have in Free Town, there's, these reasons and many more are why I love living and, and being a part of the community in Free Town, Massachusetts.
All right, now, boys and girls. Why don't you, why don't we come up here because we're gonna do the licenses. Boys and girls, come on, stand up here and come behind Ms. Pacheco and myself, okay? Now, now, boys and girls, part of our duties as a Board of Selectmen are to give out licenses in relation to different laws. Can anyone tell me what a license is? You know what a license is?
I do.
What, what's a license?
It's something that you guys say you can do certain things.
Exactly.
Like a gun license.
Right, exactly. Or even to cut it down to, a note to go from class to class is a license in its own way. Well, tonight, we have two licenses that we need to issue in order for people to sell things at the Fourth of July fireworks, or July third fireworks, whichever way you wanna refer to it. And so we're, you're gonna help us do this, okay? You're gonna sign the documents that allow us to do this, all right? So the first is going to be, for Michael Nicolai doing business as M and M Novellities at two fifty Cherry Street Far River, okay? And this license gives him the power to sell items outside of Pathway Park. But one item he cannot sell is silly strings. We don't wanna see silly strings, okay? They get all over the place and that could be a mess. So, as we do that, I'm going to read this out, and tonight, Ms. Pacheco will make a motion to accept it, all right? So, I will ask for a motion.
Um, you're gonna read it first, or you wanna?
Well, the license is, well, hawkers and, yeah, hawkers and peddlers for July third, twenty nineteen, commencing at five P M., to sell balloons in novellities for annual Fourth of July fireworks celebration.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Michael Nicolai M and M Novellities as a hawkers license for that one day on July, expiring July fourth, twenty nineteen.
Okay, and I will second that motion, meaning I go along with that motion, and then we'll have a, a vote, okay? Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. You gotta say aye also.
Do you think we should let them sell stuff at the, yeah?
Yeah. I'll let them sell stuff, friend.
Huh?
I'll approve those.
Well, yeah, but you're, you're gonna outbully.
You're gonna have to clean it up afterwards. It's a lot of silly strings to clean up.
Custodian.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. The second is another license, and that's for William L. Frank doing business as Candy Plus at fifty-three Lafayette Street, Pawtucket, Rhode Island. And it's for a hawkers and peddlers license for July fourth, twenty nineteen, to sell balloons in novellities for annual Fourth of, Fourth of July parade. But again, no silly string, all right?
Sorry, Ben.
So, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow William L. Frank doing business as Candy Plus to have a hawkers and peddlers license expiring July fourth, twenty nineteen, and no silly string.
I don't want to have to use silly string.
I'll second that. I'll second that. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, boys and girls.
Now you guys have to sign this, so.
Right.
Where is everybody? I'll put it over here.
I'm not signing the silly string.
And you guys can sign that. So here's a pen. So sign right, when you see your name, sign right above your name, okay? There is one more thing that I, I would say and ask the parents. At the July third parade, we invite the kids to ride as junior selectmen. So they'll be riding, not walking. Somebody from the Parade and Fireworks Committee will get into.
I have letters right here.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. So if you allow them, I think that it's a great experience and it's, it's a treat for them too, for doing so well. The second thing I'd like to say is I'd like to thank Michael Ward, principal, and the remarkable teachers at Free Town Elementary School because without their guidance and direction, we wouldn't have these youngsters here today. And it's not only today, it's a whole year through, and I admire each and every one of you. Thank you. Okay, you guys, get a sign, sign, sign. Ready?
Can't include the silly string.
Ben, but you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna buy you a can of silly string for hot, for your house, okay?
Really?
Yeah, really.
Don't worry, love. You don't worry, love.
Don't worry.
Don't bring it to certain places.
Right. Sign both of them, okay? Do you have an extra pen?
I do.
All right, here's another pen, so you guys can get started. Want to take a five-minute recess so we can take pictures and, okay? And we can give this out even though the judge isn't there? Do you wanna read this out loud while they go? So we have citations for the children as well.
Congratulations on your well-deserved recognition by the Free Town Elementary School for your outstanding "Why I Love My Community" essay. I am very grateful for the time, effort, and thought you put into your work. This level of effort is reflective of your excellent character and your understanding of what it means to live in Free Town. Clearly, you acknowledge that our town is a wonderful community, and you have put value into that by your writing. At this time, in the coming years, we are confident that you will demonstrate through your, your, through your deeds, that some, that same love of town and your appreciation for those who serve it. Please accept our most sincere congratulations on this award. You make Free Town very proud. Okay. Boys and girls, tell your classmates, I want some good questions for Thursday afternoon when I come and see you, all right?
Okay, I might forget that, maybe it was three days straight.
And Max. We're gonna take a five-minute recess so you guys can take pictures, okay?
All right. Before we, we'll just get back on to public discussion. Is there any public discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on. The first item is, well, second item actually, is to talk about the South Main Street Bridge Project and the change order number three. All right, please, and jump in.
For the record, I'm Jim Dois from Raven Peterson Inc., and with me tonight is our structural engineer, Kim Armstrong. We're here to discuss the change order, and I'll just briefly go into it, and Kim can probably go into the structural deficiencies that were found during the construction when they were out there. Bottom line is, the bridge is undermined a lot worse than originally thought, and mainly it was uncovered when they excavated down below the muck line. That was one of the requirements, was to excavate down a foot, just to make sure we get all the voids. Well, down under a foot, it's even in a lot worse condition than originally thought. So far, they've done the south excavation. Tomorrow, they're gonna look at the north and see what condition that's in. But as of right now, they're estimating another sixteen days of diving, along with a lot of additional route work to be done up there. Kim, if you wanna just briefly go through what, a little bit more of what we've done.
Yeah, I did bring some pictures to kinda help illustrate.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So basically, what we've, we knew initially that there, there were issues, there were voids at the, where the water line is, and there was a lot of deterioration that was happening to the arch, so that's the reason that we had actually done the rehab work to begin with. But since that was taken, since the initial work was actually done, we have, there's a crack that's actually appeared, and now, we knew there was a crack about halfway out, but now it's spread the whole way across the crown of the arch, and it continues all the way across, as well as another mirrored crack on the other side that's doing something similar. So the concern is that the abutments right now are actually undermined, and the worst crack, there's one stone that's about twelve meters wide, which is taking all the load for about six feet of the arch. So the goal is to try to shore that up with additional material so that it'll actually stabilize it. Otherwise, I would suggest closing the road, but.
So you don't suggest closing the road at this point?
Um, if the work gets done, I think it's okay for now. If it was in the winter, I'd be a little bit more hesitant because you end up with ice inside that, which actually would shift it more, or if there was a big storm event.
What about limiting, limiting the amount of weight on the bridge?
I do think that's a good idea.
Okay.
But again, I didn't, we didn't know how Free Town wanted to proceed with it, so we had held off on notifying Massot of the issue. Massot, based on their most recent, the two thousand and eighteen inspection report, they're going to be coming back out with a rating.
Uh huh.
So they're gonna be rechecking this structure, and I think at that time, they might actually be recommending a posting.
So I'd rather be proactive and try to get, take care, well, I'm gonna.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, can I?
Yeah, go, go ahead.
All right. Only because I've been watching this bridge for a long time, since we started doing the Elm Street Bridge and even prior to that, and we knew that there was a problem with this bridge, and we wanted to make sure that the, that as soon as Elm Street was done, that this one was gonna be started right away. For some reason, that didn't happen, and we kinda waited a little bit. And I know that the funding came from the state because of the floods, and Elm, uh, South Main Street was kinda pushed aside a little bit.
Right.
But I feel like with the continuous truck traffic and trailer traffic over that bridge, I think that's probably why you see the further deterioration of what's, what's in front of you.
Right. The bridge is also eighteen eighty.
Yeah, exactly.
So it wasn't really designed for that type of load.
Uh huh.
And again, we did run calculations before we actually did the rehab and said that the rehab would be adequate to do this, but that was before that crack had appeared. So I would actually hesitate to say that it'll maintain service life as long as we thought it would before.
Right.
Because initially, the rehab was intended to be, like, get you another fifty years out of that. Now, I'd actually say you're probably closer to ten to twenty.
Right.
Restricting traffic would help, but especially the heavy loads, if there's a way to stop vehicles from hitting that barrier.
Exactly.
That would probably help too, but.
Okay.
Okay. My first question would be this. We have more problems than we originally had three years ago. If the bridge had been repaired three years ago, as it initially was scheduled to be, would we have this issue tonight?
Obviously can't say for certain.
Right, I mean, well, but based on, based on your, your experience and your knowledge and experience.
Yeah, I don't think it would've. We had, we had the Massot inspection reports, and they had inspected it as recently as two thousand and eighteen, and they actually measured those cracks, and they didn't call for an increase in the size of that crack in the two thousand and eighteen inspection report. It was only when we actually went out there and started looking at it and realized it now connected that we raised a bit of an alarm on it.
So just to have you on the record, you're saying if we had done this, if the bridge had been repaired three years ago, we wouldn't be sitting here with these new cracks and this new issue?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That is one big question. The other thing is, we don't, we're, we're looking here at a sizable, just regularly, about fifty percent increase on the cost to repair the bridge over what initially was set. And we haven't gone on the other side. Do you have any inclination of what might be on the north side?
I know this side was the worst, the corner, the Water Street, the one that's adjacent to Water Street, that corner. I do know that there's some voids on the north side on that one as well. But again, we didn't find the extent of it until after the, the soil was removed adjacent to it.
Right, I understand.
So we could end up in the same, with more deterioration than we think.
Uh huh. And would it have been the good if the construction company had examined this a little bit closer before they put out their bid three years ago?
They really couldn't, because if you excavate that soil before the bid and then it sits there for a year, it actually has the potential to create, create an undermining, which is also why we didn't actually remove the soil when we were doing the design. It's something that you kind of have to do when it's, like, when you're there to replace the material right away. I would actually be hesitant to have, to have asked them to do that.
Okay. All right. And you're saying the, this will give the, the bridge, when you say ten to twenty years, it, yeah, I know, it's a big parameter. Are we leaning more to ten, or are we leaning more to twenty?
Ten gets you on the tip, which is, which is where we were trying to get something that would at least get you ten years. It could potentially last longer, but again, there's a lot of variables in place. One of them is the big storm events, obviously, can damage the arch again, crashes on the railing. There's a few other, like, just, it's susceptible to certain things, but.
If I may, and we've discussed this, that it's probably very important that we start the process to get this on the tip. Again, it takes, it's not that much money for bridges, and that's what takes it a long time. To get it on the tip probably takes a year, but at least when it's on the tip, if, if that had to be accelerated for some reason, the, the plan work and everything else might take eighteen, twenty-four months, but it could get bumped up further. So it's, you know, I just wanna, while everybody's, it's fresh in everybody's mind, it's just to start that process and get it on the tip.
I wanna do it yesterday, actually.
Yeah.
What do you wanna do about the, the weight limit?
Well, I think the best thing on, on a weight limit, well, first of all, we gotta get some information on what, what's it's gonna be, what's gonna be a weight limit. You know, are we talking thirty tons, are we talking, you know, fifteen tons? I, I think we wanna get a little bit of idea. The first, the first thing we gotta do is, we have to have this work done, okay? We're, we're in the middle of this project, and, you know, it's, it's hit. And we're basically behind the eight ball, okay? And the thing that disturbs me is we're behind the eight ball because of Etna Bridge and their lack of doing this three years ago when it, when they initially went out. And, you know, why it happened, and of course, Etna Bridge isn't here tonight, you know, and now, we'll, we'll never be talking Etna Bridge, you know? Let's face it. But that's another matter. But I think the first thing, I, I think what we should do here tonight is, my personal opinion is we move forward with the continuing, the repair of the bridge, and then we, we talk about a weight limit, once we've, once we, we know for sure the, all the facts, and what, what's the north end like, and so forth. And once that is clear to us, once the repair job is done, then we can, we can see where we go.
We actually can't implement, or the town cannot implement a weight limit, and it asks it from the state bridge engineer.
Right.
So if they're redoing the rating, he will actually recommend based on that. And honestly, if they do the rating, they pay for the rating, so it might be in the best interest to wait, but I can actually call and discuss with him and just see if, where it is the process.
Well, I think we need, I think we need the inspection. Once we have the inspection, then we have all the facts, and we're talking.
But if you can push them and, and try to get us some answers quicker, then I definitely would ask you to do that for us, because I don't wanna, like Charlie said, we don't wanna sit on our hands and wait anymore. This has gone on way too long, and we don't want it to further deteriorate. At the same time, we wanna protect the integrity of what we already have, so.
Right.
We, we did that with the Elm Street Bridge, and I don't remember what the weight limit was. I don't know if you remember.
Thirty, thirty tons.
Thirty tons, so, I mean, it, it affects a lot of things.
Eighteen tons.
Eighteen?
Eighteen tons.
'Cause the buses couldn't go over it either.
That's right.
So it, it affects a lot of things for us because it's a additional cost for the town because we have to reroute the buses a different way and such. So we'd like to get some more info as soon as you can.
Okay.
But I'll make a, a motion to, to accept the change order of, for, for a total aggregate amount of eight thirty-one, eight forty-six, seventy.
All right, I'll second that.
Could we, could the mill should be made contingent upon the finance committee recommendations for funding the transfers?
We can do that, but it's gotta be paid for somehow, so.
No, no, I know that. We have a contingency of some.
Right, I saw that, but we can do that, but then that's gonna tie our hands just to their recommendation. If not, then we may have to have a special town meeting to take money out of stabilization to pay for it. Right? So if we don't do both, then we're not, I mean, my preference would be to get the contin, you know, to follow the contingency plan that has been set down, but if not, then, if they say no, then what do we do? Then we're gonna have to, right. So I can make that as part of my motion that we, we would like.
If they're gonna meet on Wednesday, I'm gonna be going there.
All right, so we would like to go along with the contingency plan. If not, it still has to get paid, and we might have to have a special town meeting in order to do so.
That's right.
So that's my motion.
All right. Motion made. I'll second that for the contingent for the transfers as posted here. I'll just run through the transfers. One is going to be twenty-five thou, three thousand dollars from the town building improvements and transferring that to capital projects. The other is a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, oh, going from the health premiums to capital projects. And then it's gonna be.
Six thousand Medicare insurance penalty to capital projects.
Six thousand for Medicare insurance penalty to capital projects for a total of, oh, one.
Those are the transfers, yeah.
The transfers are one, a total of a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. The contingency is.
Contingency is already there.
The barry part of the contract is eighty-eight thousand.
That would be our preference, but if not, then I, I'd still wanna make sure that this project goes forward, and we'll have to go to Plan B if not.
Okay. Hopefully, we'll have to go to Plan B. So, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, folks.
One question on the board. They're ready to go tomorrow, and I don't, as you know, there was, they, they needed a little bit more money. Is, are you authorizing at least a hundred and? as you know, there was, they, they needed a little bit more money, is, are you authorizing at least a hundred and forty?
Where?
That I can get, um.
Where authorized at least?
The eighty-eight at this point, till we have the counter.
Until we have.
Vote of the finance committee.
So, so we could get them started tomorrow up to that eighty-eight, which would probably by, you know, through the end of this week, I would, I would estimate at least. I just wanted to.
Yeah.
The, the, the problem is they're ready, uh, the divers have other jobs, so they're ready to pull out if we didn't. So as long as I could tell them tomorrow, tonight actually, that they can start and have them start funding for a few days.
They do.
Okay, great, thank you.
Alright, you're welcome.
I'll make a separate motion to, um, take the interpar- interdepartmental transfer request and move them over to the, um, finance committee.
Okay, um, motion made, I'll second that, uh, all in favor.
Aye.
Uh, item number five, the awarding of the, uh.
Was that for all of the tran- all three of those transfer requests?
And, um, next is the ambulance building, hello chief.
Hello.
We did a, uh,
We solicited three quotes.
Yes, you resolicited three quotes. New England Medical Building came in the lowest. Uh, ComStar Ambulance Building Service came in second, along with a coastal medical building. And, uh, it's my understanding that you would recommend going to ComStar Ambulance Building because we've dealt work with in the past, it's a good relationship. Town, uh, accountant has also, uh, been in favor of, uh, going with ComStar because the cost is, I believe, less than two thousand dollars. So with that.
I'll make a motion to approve ComStar ambulance billing.
Okay, uh, motion made, I will second that motion, all in favor.
Aye.
And just remember, if we can get ComStar into, uh, now that we've talked.
You want that sometime in July?
Yes, that would be, that would be good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. The next is a memo- memorandum of agreement between the Board of Selectmen and, uh, Building Commissioner Jeff Chandler in relation to, uh, uniform allowance. And the sum of five hundred dollars.
Is this, this is something new?
Uh, it's standard for all the bylaw, or for most of the bylaw employees, we just never did it for him in the fall.
So is a MOA necessary, or is it?
We've signed it for everyone, uh, Derek had it, uh, Kevin Bernardo had it, Scott Barbado had it, so.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Um, minutes from the May twentieth, uh, twenty nineteen meeting is the next item.
Is this the regular meeting, not the?
Um, this is a regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made to approve, uh.
Just the May twentieth, not the June third.
Oh, and, um, I will second that, all in favor.
Aye.
The June third.
You're gonna have to wait.
Yes, alright, we will, uh, put the June third off until our next meeting seeing that, um, Ms. Pacheco was not here. Alright. Any police station project update?
I think you can see every time you go by the police station, um, site, that it looks amazing, it's clean, um, they're right on time. Um, the budding's in the back, that's the, uh, actual, the retaining wall, um, just for those that think it's the building, it's not. But everything else is going in and everything's moving according to schedule, which is great news.
Alright, and town administration's report.
Uh, I'll have a couple of things, uh, one is that I'm gonna be setting a meeting up with the, uh, Kuschnit Board of Selectmen uh, in July to, uh, discuss the Freetown Screw property and how we're gonna affect the transfer between the two towns. And I have a joint board meeting to, uh, hopefully accomplish that. Um, I wanted the board to know that the Mass Works Grant Program is open. Uh, they're gonna be accepting applications at the end of July through August. Um, any large scale, uh, construction project that might be worthy of, uh, applying for, particularly, potentially could be, uh, the Sewell Project, could be any other project that the board, uh, would like to pursue, I can begin working on that. There's gonna be a, a webinar on Thursday that I'm gonna go online and, and attend and, uh, hopefully have more information on it and we can start moving on that. Um, I also wanted to call the board's attention to surped and the fact that we have forty hours every year that we get as of July first. Uh, twenty hours of those hours generally go to the planning board, but the other twenty, uh, in the past have gone to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, I'm, would like to make a recommendation that we, uh, be able to use some of those hours for economic development activities associated with, uh, the reactivation of the Economic Development Committee. And finally, uh, I'm gonna be attending the South Coast, uh, Managers Meeting on Wednesday in Swansea.
Do we want to, um, instruct David on the surped hours now?
Yeah, definitely.
Alright, um, what's for us, David? Do you want a motion?
No, I think that we could just give him direction.
Yeah, alright, alright, that ends.
We'll have to vote on the hours anyway, so once they come back, we'll vote on it ten.
Alright, that ends the Board of Selectmen, turn over the personnel board.
So, um, we have a letter for, an appointment for Janet Pila as a senior clerk effective, uh, June eleventh, twenty nineteen.
Uh, I'll make the motion.
I'll second, all in favor.
Aye.
Um, reap appointments, uh, ugh, this is an awful, awful time for all of us. And I have to say, you did a great job, Tim, cause all those appointments are, they're succinct, they're in order, they're easy to follow.
Problems last year with them, so I took the time before I became administrative assistant to pull everything together.
Yeah, it's amazing and I think it's, it's gonna be a good thing for every year going forward, it's just gonna make your job so much easier. So I'll entertain a motion to, um, to reap, do the reap appointments, um, for fiscal year twenty twenty as presented in, um, in our agenda.
Okay, I just went through it, there's a couple that, uh, have, uh, corrections or, uh, additions and so forth, so I'll list those and then I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Because, okay, um, I can, I'll read them out what I've gone through with Tim and with, uh, the town clerk's office. And, um, s- some, uh, old employers, first, first line employees of some of these, uh, appointments. Craig Cabral, I don't know.
Right.
Um, so I would, uh.
We'll hold on him?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll hold on him.
I would go along with the recommendation, the chief of police there. On Jeff Chandler, um, he should be the American Disabilities Act local coordinator. It was origi- it was always originally, um, with the building commissioner. So I would change, uh, for appointments of David, that item to Jeff Chandler.
David, you're all right with that, right? Okay.
Uh, the next is Antonio DeMello. Um, my understanding from the planning board is he has been inactive and he had not, uh, gone in for his appointment. I swear.
Swearing in, okay.
Swearing in. On page three, uh, Timothy Dwyer, uh, the signal operator part-time, should be signal operator full-time.
He's still not sworn in though either, right, or is he sworn in?
Well, he hadn't been sworn in for, uh, last year. So he had, they were gonna have to have a little issue how we.
Okay.
That's gonna be a little.
We'll figure that out.
Yeah, um, the next one is on page four, James Riley. Strike that. And, um, on, um, page five for Bradford Piver, I would suggest that we make a note that it is for one year.
Um, the only other question I have also is Sheila. Scududo.
I actually spoke to her today.
Yep.
Uh, she still is in the process of, uh, trying to find a place or it is her intention to move back into the, uh, into town. Um, she, uh, currently has some outstanding issues that she's trying to work through and, uh, she just asked for a little consideration that she, she does wanna move back into the community and still serve as, as a missis- as a successor.
Okay, I, I don't know how, alright, we'll have to talk about that.
Yeah, I mean.
I did talk to council about it in terms of, there are certain parameters you can allow them, if there's a certain period of time and certain circumstances.
Alright, so why don't you put that together for the next agenda, we'll have to vote on that, only so we can make sure that everything's clean, okay.
Um, on page number six, Joshua Simmons, uh, reserve police officer. That I believe should be auxiliary police officer. And the last is on, uh, Edward Walsh, my understanding of we retire.
Oh, is he still on that?
Yes.
Apologies.
Okay, and with those, um, corrections, I'll make a motion that we, uh, make the appointments as printed.
Second, um, just to remind everybody that they have only a certain amount of time to go, to get sworn in. Alright, thanks, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Annual performance evaluations.
Um, if I may make a suggestion.
Yep.
George was in, was interested in, uh, discussing this.
Okay, so we'll hold. Cemetery Commission Sexton. Thanks. Um, notice here by given that the cemetery commission is seeking applications for the position of a part-time Sexton. This will be from Memorial Day to Columbus Day, oh, that's perfect for you, fifteen hours a week, flexible, hourly pay rate, state minimum wage, it's good, anyway, um, anybody interested? Um, applications and job, job descriptions are available at the Board of Selectmen's office, um, and if anybody's interested, please send in a letter of intent. Okay, there's a request here from Mike McCutcheon, who will vacation time to fiscal year twenty twenty. For reasons of which you are likely aware, I have to rearrange some of my time I plan to take as vacation time in the months of May and June. This has left me with an abundance of vacation time to use in the next three weeks. And at this time, it does not seem reasonable or likely that I would be able to use all of it by June thirtieth. For this reason, I am requesting, um, to carry six hours of FY nineteen vacation into, um, FY twenty.
Alright, um, I don't have a problem with this, but I would like, and because it, the timeliness of it, I would make a motion that we approve this request. But I want to also, uh, have a memorandum of agreement, uh, with the union on this specific thing, that way there's never, uh, there's documentation of why it was done and that another union or another person can't come.
Right, cause it's in the, it's explicitly states in the, in the contract that they can't carry over, unless it's approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
And this case, you and I both know of why this was done, so I certainly don't have any opposition to allowing him to carry over the six hours. But I, like you, um, I agree that, uh, this is not gonna start a precedent and we're not gonna keep doing this, be, this was, this is done. And we do have to take these case by case, and this is something that we think is, is needed and necessary, so.
It's six hours.
I don't think we need a memorandum of agreement, I think that everybody knows that this is why we're doing it. And if somebody wants to come in front of the board and ask a question, we can certainly tell them.
My, my only thing is to have it in writing, that we, we, we document, have a document with, with the union.
Document why we're giving him, why we're carrying over these six hours. So, um, a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have to go into, just executive for the first thing, right?
Yes, uh, um, one thing before we go into the executive session, uh, under, um, business not, uh, anticipated forty-eight hours before. Uh, the chief of police sent a letter, I don't know if you've got, um, a copy of it, but it was asking for a clarification.
It was an attachment.
It's, um, asking for some guidance in relation to.
Nope, that's not the one.
Nope, that's not it. Asking for guidance, uh, in relation to the contract provision which allows for buyback of vacation. Seeing that the date has passed.
I don't know how to answer this.
Um, well, I would be, I, I concur, I would say that because the date is already passed and was.
No, I agree, but I don't know how to, how to.
I, I don't see where it would affect the contract going forward.
No.
Uh, it's just allowing that if there's someone there who wants to buy back, uh, the five days between now and July first, they could, instead of having to take the vacation. And, um.
Yeah, they have three weeks to do it in, right?
Uh, my, the, the contract si- says that you would buy, you would, uh, notify that you're buying back vacation time by March fifteenth.
By March fifteenth, but that time is come and go on, no, I, I agree, but they have to do it by six thirty nineteen.
Right, yes, yeah, oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
They can do that, it's by the contract, they don't, I mean, we didn't sign it until after March fifteenth, it's, it is what it is, yeah.
Okay, so we'll just, um, direct the police department.
Did you wanna do a vote on that?
Um, why don't we just?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve, um, the buyout of the, but it has to be done before six thirty nineteen.
The end of this year, and, uh, I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, um, the last item, and we will not be returning to open session, is under Massachusetts law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, paragraph A, sub-paragraph three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with a public employee union local eleven forty-four Luna clerical library bargaining unit, because an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so desires, and I will, um, so declare, um, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, I'll second, motion made and seconded, um, to go into executive session, uh, all in favor.
Aye. Yes.
Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes. Alright, thank you.